Alright, it's six o'clock and we're live.
What's going on now?
It's called this Budget Workshop 2425 to order. The first thing I have here, if there's a letter, we have one commissioner resigned. If there's any children in the room, you need to put your hands over here as I'm gonna read you his letter of resignation. It says, "February 13th, 2024, I resign from Ramser Board of Commissioners effectively immediately. Jay Hubbard, go fuck yourselves. Nobody else wants to." That's the kind of garbage the people in Ramser elected to represent them on this board. Thank you much, and thank you for your resignation. Now let's get to work. I think that... We went over the police, you will be first, the police department, where the chief go?
Let me step to the restroom for a minute.
Chief, I just sent this information to me.
Okay.
And I'm gonna report, go ahead Carol.
Let me just mention right quick in between here, about your new sheets that you've got, what information that I had, I have put on here, and what we talked about last time, I have put on here, just wanted to say that. And Jay, I need to talk to you, we need to discuss about the salaries, I didn't come up with your figure. And so I just wanna go over, we can get straight.
And that was based on what we appropriated last year, not the current salaries.
That's what I wondered, and that would have had...
He did give you that.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, or, that's kinda what I thought happened, but I need to just very pop a little detail about the money for the salaries that we don't think.
I haven't, I'm done now y'all. They just gave me this this evening, so I have no idea what's happening. I just got it. Did you give, is the salary content in here?
Yes, work here, I'm a mayor, I'm a president.
Okay. And what I've got here, what he's given to me, I'm just gonna copy this over and get to each of you, so that you can review it as well prior to when we come together next week.
Okay, well, what we talked about, you remember when Commissioner Parrish gave us that list of small towns comparable to the town of Ramser?
Yes.
And Ramser was third from the bottom.
They are, and I do not have that.
And that, I don't have neither, but we all, we all know that that's a fact. Well, and the average is forty-one thousand dollars a year. What, we bumped that starting salary to thirty-nine and six, was it thirty-nine even?
We bumped thirty-nine even, and there's a little extra there for show pies and cocks, get them where they need to be. Everybody else got ten percent minus needs, I'll leave mine up to the board and the mayor.
And one guy, I saw one guy got thirteen?
Uh, show pies, bring him up, he's got two years of experience, why would keep him at starting pay? I had no thought.
Don't need to.
Should we, should we move?
In prior boards, nobody hears issue, but prior boards, when he got his sergeants raise, it wasn't really enough to put him above center's control to super. So, that was reason I left.
This won't get us to the average, but it'll get us...
Closer.
A lot closer. And of all these numbers are crunch, we won't know that until this is over. So you, Commissioner Parrish, what did you have?
On the present?
The police department.
Right now, I had, what was originally budgeted was three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, seven hundred and more, okay?
Yep.
Now, what we're requesting is four sixty-two, two sixty-one, sixty-five.
Yeah.
Four sixty-two, four sixty-five. Four sixty-two, two sixty-one, and sixty-five, same. And I got one twenty-six, five hundred and sixty, sixty-five, same.
Did you have, did he put the personnel in there also?
That's the, that's the salaries?
Two people. Did he add two people?
Yes, two extra people, alright, and then two extra positions.
Mine's, yeah, mine's got ten percent in Christmas bonus, but it's, if he says it's in there, it's in there.
He's got one in, but he has three, two extra positions, ten percent wages plus the Christmas bonuses, if y'all decide to leave that same, that also includes longevity for those of us who are big enough to get it.
And we'll double check all of those figures, chief, because the longevity will be more than last year, because it's similar.
I put the basics together, I apologize, I'm not an mathematician.
Don't worry about it, we'll get it.
Carol, have we got any numbers from the county yet?
No, we haven't got anything from the county, and the only, the only thing that I've got from anybody was that dynamar saying that they're going up, and then want Southern Software's maintenance to have their, you know, to have their help. That's the only things I've received, I haven't received anything from anybody else, EDC or, or fire inspections or...
I'm pretty sure, pretty sure animals, animal trolls probably gonna go up. And that program that the DA's office has got us doing, Andy does, I notice they're going around to each town and they're wanting more money. But I can't, like, community, what is that thing that y'all go meet, PSN, yeah, they're gonna want more money.
Is that the DA? He's supposed to be here, I can't remember if it's next week or next month, one or the other.
And I don't know that's what they're doing.
One month, the president of the ball is supposed to be here, and another month is when the DA is supposed to be at a regular meeting.
Those, the vest deal, did you proceed with that?
No sir, did not, I got you another quote. I was requested last week, the vote, and I was led to believe by the salesmen that it's three several thousand dollars, no, or however, it is not. The regional vote on level two was sixty-nine oh one fifty. On the level three, the commissioner had you ask about, and recommend I get another price. It comes to seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars and seventy, seems roughly, it's a little more than a thousand dollars. And y'all, if y'all tell me to proceed, I will email a man tomorrow and get you to proceed.
Proceed, I mean, it's just a thousand dollars, why drop a level, you don't need to drop a level.
No, I mean, to keep y'all safe.
I agree, I was working what I...
Well, I understand that.
Alright, I'll make a motion and go ahead and proceed with that.
I'll slip.
All in favor?
There you go, I'll work on that.
If I come back tomorrow, I wanna hear excuse why you didn't do it.
Carol, I was looking over sanitation, is that what they're going up this year?
Well, you know, I haven't heard of these ways of sanitation.
These figures did include the hiring the lady full-time?
Yes, our way, they did, they did it full-time, they were here.
You talking about sanitation?
Yeah, I was reading that where it said four percent increase. Is that from last year on that? That's the easy one to knock out, we hadn't heard nothing from them, have we? And it's, I can reach out to them, just see if they're gonna go up. I gotta call them anyway. I'm gonna reach out and see if they're gonna go up on trash service. Everything else is, probably they will too.
What's that, what we got in the fire?
Mm-hmm. Now that was four of everybody was left.
Just got to take the salaries and whatever, I don't know.
This, where it says salaries full-time, that split between two people, how's the split?
Uh, well, there's a pretty large differentiation plan right now, Craig makes significantly more, of course, he's been there longer and had more certifications and given off. Uh, the guy we currently hired, we hired at thirty-two, he's still in AMT school, we will finish it and pay for our mates, and we told him, depending on him passing AMT school and getting certified, that he would go to base to pay them, which is thirty-five, Carol, is that correct?
Yep.
I believe, so the firefighter that just left, that these replacements went to high point, he was making thirty-eight, and Craig makes forty-six.
We're behind on them too.
Craig's considered...
Everybody, we're behind on most everybody. I could, I can go through the league and do that for that department too, if y'all want me to.
Yeah, if you want.
I'll do that and have it at the next budget meeting. I go through the league and, like I did the police, and look at the average. His some...
Such a shortage of firefighters right now, it doesn't seem to matter what a lot, if they're in great, for a high point, they said, they're throwing land in the sand like crazy.
Can't get nobody.
You can't get enough, but for, you know, for years, volunteer departments, the fire departments, volunteers started falling off, the guy that did, coming in, that the fighter departments are so great, they look at you like, you get your spot off, and you tell them you gotta find the two years to get certified at the beginning with. This, I mean, and it's not this year, it's nation-wide, you know, it's kinda signed by the cops.
Didn't it take you two months to even find a good applicant?
Yes. It felt lucky, yeah, it's a difficult place, but too sorry to work anymore, it don't matter to anybody. Y'all, I'm glad, so, this is tough.
I have a question on this, the firing retirement expense, how is that paid, is eleven thousand, is that divided between the full-time? Or how does that work?
There's two separate camps, sir, the retirement for the paid guys, the retirement expense for the volunteers, that is paid into the pension fund by the town, for when the volunteers get twenty years of service, credible service and paid service, and are fifty-five years off, drawing a pension, it's one of the seven, I think, retirement systems in the state of Oklahoma. And in order to have a year of credible service, you have to have dollar training hours, isn't that right?
Okay. Cause I was just, uh, I was addressed by somebody that, well, it was, and they were saying that they can't get their retirement, and is that because of the fact that they don't have enough time in?
Uh, no, we have actually two cases right now that we're working on, the pension fund, for the special voluntary firefighters, during the time the COVID was going on, it had a lot of turnover, there's been trouble, paperwork going back and forth, that type of thing. Both of the firefighters that were having major issues now, one that could already be drawn, and one that's getting ready to, they were in other departments previously. Now, an order for us to, them to retire from our department, they have to transfer their funds, cause it's a legal retirement account, just like mine, yours, anybody's. They have to transfer their funds from the former department they were in to our department. And if they don't do that, they can't be eligible, and both of them have more than enough years of paid service already. But if they don't transfer those funds over, well, you know, there's, there's nothing we can do about it. I can't move anybody's retirement, you know, I can't move my fire retirement account, or whatever, we don't want to get anybody else. If they don't transfer those funds, we can't do it.
So they said, okay, so you're saying that they have to transfer?
Yes, they have to come back from the state on our turnaround document, you know.
Well, have the paper, cause have the paperwork been done for those two people? Because they're still showing up on the other ones' paperwork when it comes in.
That's correct, that's another common problem, and those, these two individuals particularly, we told over and over and over for years, get this stuff transferred over so we can do it. One of them thinks that he has, but he's not sure, and we've been paying in on him the whole time.
Are you supposed to pay in on him if they're not on a turnaround sheet?
They are on our roster, so we pay on them if they're on our roster.
Okay. I'm just trying, I'm not trying, I'm trying to understand his thing.
Oh, yes, ma'am, and it is very confusing, I will be the first to admit that. We have, uh, again, pretty much universally, and I thought it was just us that was messing stuff up somehow that I didn't understand. Beginning of the year is generally when your turnaround document comes around. So, I asked the chief to make me one night, is anybody's turnaround document right when he gets back here? And every chief in Red Dog County that was in that meeting that night said no. It is a constant battle to try to get that stuff straightened out with those people over there, and I don't know mine. You know, there's, you call over there, every time you talk to somebody else, you get a different answer to the same question. As one, for instance, Commissioner Parrish's son is a firefighter in our department. He's got, I don't know right off, I'm gonna say about five years of service for our department. Two years ago, it came back that he was paid in full. Now, the only way that you can be paid in full is to have twenty years of credible service, and it got paid in all of that time. But they insisted that he was paid in full, and we're calling and calling and calling going, this is his name, this is the social, you've got something wrong. No, we don't, I'm going, look at his age, there's his DOB, you know, he didn't start when he was seven. You know, I mean, it is the craziest mess dealing with, but we're, we have been, three of us actually, have been trying to get this, the whole thing squared away, or, and then this includes going over to Raleigh, in which one time we met a very nice young man, but he had just been hired and had no idea what we were talking about, or any of it, he was the only one in the office, so that did no good. Multiple emails, multiple phone calls, and tried to get everything tracked down, specifically squared away. As another, for instance, we had a firefighter that had about twenty-two years of service in, it was paid in full, it had been shown paid in full for two years. He retired and moved to Tennessee. When he turned fifty-five, he was getting ready to start drawing, so he turned his paperwork in to draw, let's send it back and tell him, you're not paid in full. And we're like, we got two years of turnaround documents to say he's paid in full, we've got all the records proving that he's paid in full, no, no, he's not paid in full. You know, we all are the ones, you know, we've got the records proving it, all those training records and service records, and y'all are the ones that said correctly, two years earlier, this guy's paid in full, they insisted down, no, no, he's not paid in full. He needs four more months of service. So, you know, it was a battle and a half getting that straightened out, is, why, why is such a mess, I have no idea.
Why, well, part about the time that these two people, we're talking, why about the time that they had him before they, uh, before COVID hit? Cause you were saying, you know, with COVID, it was, yeah.
Yeah, that was, we, we had more personnel issues than out of Raleigh during that time, of course, that, you know, but, not on our end, you know, they were serving right along, right here. It's a...
Doing with Raleigh's loads fun.
It's, it's, uh, stuff that I have no logical answers for. Now, there were two years, one was painless here, and the next, when the, none of the pension fund was paid into period. She was gonna take care of it, she did nothing with it, turnaround document came the next year, nobody knew what to do with it, cause they'd never seen anything like that before, so they didn't, they didn't pay anything on it, so when I get questioning, hey, or as you say, it hasn't been paid or whatever, we get the check and then it had, that was paid in on nobody for two years. You know, this is one of the few benefits volunteer firefighters get, and it's a walk, you can draw about a hundred and seventy dollars a month free cash.
Man, I'm shocked with that.
So, but that, that is one benefit, if you start twenty years at a hundred and fifty-five, you know, about to make its benefit, not only monetary benefits they give. So, you know, we, we have, have been working for quite some time, and are still working to try to get it squared away.
Alright, so, is it, is everybody's getting paid into now, that's supposed to?
Yes, yes. As a matter of fact, that was just done, that happened the first year, it was done in January, I believe. Would pay, you can pay it monthly, quarterly, or annually, would pay it in.
Do they turn in confirmation if they admit that's when it comes out of that line, I don't know, that you passed it out?
Yes.
So, with these two firefighters right now, where are they? You said that they had to turn in paperwork, I guess that's still what they need to do in order to get into the, in order to get paid into the...
Yes.
Okay.
If they don't transfer their account to us, they'll never be able to retire from us.
So, what, is it something that they need to do as far as from where they was at, or?
They are the only ones that can do it.
And so neither one of them have been, their paperwork, have turned in?
One of them says that he has, but they have never moved it. You fill out, there's a form that we give them that you fill out and transfer, that's a twenty-five dollar, but you have to like, transfer.
So who needs, who needs to move it, Raleigh or where they came from?
Raleigh, yeah, yeah, the department, like, and at one time, if you had X number of years of service in another department that didn't finish your time there, you could draw it out, or the department or agency that paid into it for you, you, if it was paid by somebody else, could draw it out themselves, that was stopped several years ago. Because, and the agencies looked at it like, we paid this money in on this person, they didn't like it to retirement, it's our money, we're taking it back. No, that's not the fact, you paid into it in their retirement account for them, you know, they can let it sit there from now on, they may finish it out later, or they can draw that money out, you know, plugged with a penalty, before they retire away. There's, there's a bunch of things that make absolutely no logical sense, I will be the first one to admit that, I sure wish that I had seemingly simple answers to questions that, oh, but Raleigh can't even generate to us, it's amazing. But, but, you know, like I said, unfortunately, it's not just isolated to our department. And then, and it's not just, this doesn't happen recently, with bad cases like this come up over the years.
So Commissioner Parrish is gonna go to the league and check on his salaries like he did for the police department? So, is that all we have now for the fire department? Well, this, we can mark the cemetery, we gotta, if we take that two thousand dollars, and I don't think those four by fours will cost that much, but they might have to be treated, we talking about that fence? It's a, using the money of this year's budget to go ahead and get that done, finished? But you'll have to put two thousand or some money back in there in the new budget, won't you?
Yeah, well, we can put it back in, in the new budget, because we didn't use it out of this budget.
Right.
Yeah, so we just gonna leave the budget, like it was, leave it alone. Because even, like I said, with Mr. Fry, what he, the information that he's sending, he's not changing, he's just going up just a little bit, and we've always allowed enough to him, just in case we had an extra mole or something.
Well, which one do you want to talk about next?
You still waiting on quotes, right?
Yeah, between doing my special report this week and personnel issues all week, I'm not, it's too much for him, but I did get salaries from Carol yesterday, I just gotta do some of them. And then, I talked with John from the Wooten Company this morning, and by the end of the week, I should have water treatment report and your wastewater treatment facility reports, and each and other of the courts should have a capital improvement plan by the end of them. So, I'm kinda waiting to see what they recommend on those, and then, I know, kinda getting where I need to go with capital projects and stuff like that. We also talked about this morning doing some, some other funding projects with Wooten.
I was, I was on there, but I couldn't hear nothing.
Yeah, so, one of the things at the wastewater plant is, we only have one clarifier, so when that clarifier goes down, you know, there's no way to treat the wastewater port is out to the lagoon, you know, so one thing that they're recommending is adding a second clarifier, and John seems to think we can get the funding for that. And then with the expansion that the counties want to do, that would kinda contribute towards that. And then, part of that funding, I requested that we look at upgrading the main pump station on West Ridge, and going from dry pit pumps to smushable pumps. So, we got a lot of funding opportunities, so kinda seeing what we get through before I start putting two new big projects in there.
Is the lake gonna change any?
Well, we will have to go back as far as the budget plans for that, and that and stuff.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to think about, what, we need to put enough money in there that we'll, next year, if when we go to the electric, the electric motor on that boat?
Replace that motor.
It won't. Impact is so bad, cause those electric motors are pretty expensive.
Yep.
And it won't be right us running the gasoline motor, other people can't, so.
Not for that boat.
Did we, did I tell you that man that screwed went and looked at that building on the other side that was leaking? You know, I didn't realize it was leaking, when I went and looked, the shingles looked good.
Yeah, so that's something I want to ask Chris, when we have to, cause I was gonna get you to go over there with me and get inside.
Yeah, so, they went inside, and it's actually missing the shingles.
Yeah, they gonna replace the shit, some, two or three shingles missing?
Uh, they didn't get on top of it, they can see those from the ground.
Oh, so they, they gonna find some shingles and replace those. And if that sheet rock is falling on the inside, we need to replace that, be my suggestion to replace it with three H plywood. For that application, it'd be much better than sheet rock.
Well, that'd be fine, I just need, it just needs to be done. It's in bad shape.
Is it the restaurant, is that the restroom on the western side?
Yeah, on the west side.
I mean, it's bad enough to tore up all the time from venglas and stuff like that, really, the cameras out there too, if we're gonna get the things out of it, cause I just seen this... Cause I just send this day locked and then be unlocked whenever their shelters is being replaced. And we would have to provide that at that point, but I don't think that they should be open anytime I wasn't. They can drive around through
Yeah.
the main entrance and newsroom there.
Yeah, they, they destroy everything in there.
I mean, I think cameras would be the biggest way to the trailer.
Is the internet, can you pick the internet up from the office over there? Is it spotty?
I think it's spotty.
I mean, we could put a jet pack up in the ceiling and run it from that, but extra jet pack, but hide it. Well, we have to put it up, lock and key, or somebody'd walk off with it.
And, and those fellows that put the new roof on Friday, they put rat wire on the inside of the gable ends. But they did not replace, there was a couple of bad boards, one, one on each end that they didn't replace. But we gonna do, I'll do something about that. We're gonna buy some vinyl paint and paint the maybe we can replace those some boards ourselves. Then they fix those shingles and move, look at that roof, that ceiling. Of course, sheet rock, I think sheet rock's way cheaper than plywood anyway, isn't it? But it's a little more complicated to put up.
Yeah.
But I think plywood would be the best application.
It'll look better. They wouldn't be able to punch a hole in it like they would sheet rock.
That's right. So, so we gonna, we gonna need several thousand dollars in that lake budget.
Mary, I should've mentioned that we need to get the contract settled off of there.
Yeah, that's kind of nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they uh
Smart.
Richard called me today and wanna know if they, if we had uh voted to let them have it. And I said, I told him I, I don't think it's necessary to fix something if it's broke. We just carry on, all right? And just give them the keys. They need to sign.
We would, yes, we would just get them the county.
Sign the contract.
Mm-hmm, but just sign the contract and continue on.
Find out if there are gonna be any changes in their price or open that, I can read them a new contract, just to make sure that.
Yeah, I've got to touch base with them on, on where they want to be or feel like they're working on price point based off of where things ended last year with bait and stuff too. So there's, there's a couple of other things on them.
So I'll just tell Richard they need to come by here and sign the contract, right?
Let's, let's make sure we got, that we're on the same page on the price.
As far as the money.
With the town and them.
I think they're comfortable price point for, because we have had, we've had that expansion now to board. Feels like they want to increase that. I mean, we are looking at, you know, how, we can always shoot for it.
Well, if we can leave it the same, that would leave oh, more than you could do to repair this week.
That was what my intent was.
Yeah.
Is to kind of keep that the same. They were comfortable with it.
Yeah.
Have you talked to, have you talked to Richard and Chrissy about this, their salary?
Not recently, but yeah, I have.
I haven't. As a matter of fact, I just.
The main concern is whether or not they, you know, felt that we wanted them to come back. And as far as I'm concerned, it's running very well.
Looks very good over there.
They're, they're working it as a team effort and family effort.
It's clean over there.
Yeah.
Um, I'm proud of them. I mean, if we could increase it, that would be great. I was thinking about it today, but there again, like I said, there's been a lot of things that's needed to be done. It has not been done at the lake since twenty-one. This past year was great. It was um for us to be able to get what we have, what we have accomplished though. But that's something that, you know, we can still think about. Cause like I said, there's some other things that I've got to um work out and talk with them about.
So is this amount for both of them?
Yes, is it technically, yes, it's one person, but they work it as a team together.
Isn't Chris's, Chris is the person, isn't she? But they, her husband works with her. But they do do a good job.
They do. And that's just being like, when they sign the um contract, they'll just prove, they'll provide a document showing their coverage, their insurance and all as well.
You know, I don't think that price has raised but three thousand dollars since Barry Richardson was the lake.
Had it went up much.
It's not really went up because, I mean, much of that, we, you know, this increase is true even seeing that's an extra month. It's been thrown in there because we increased it.
Yeah. Let's crunch the numbers and then we'll come back to their salary. After we figure out the boat, what we're gonna do about the boat, uh, maybe put some money aside to buy two or three aluminum boats. We get, we need them bad.
We need them. No, you're talking money.
I know.
You're talking fifteen hundred dollars. Well, that was six months ago, so.
There might be more in that.
We can talk again.
Yeah.
But it's money, it's a lot of money.
But you can't, I think McCullough and Fable is probably that's where we always bought them and it was always the cheapest place. They definitely, definitely need them and they are expensive.
Oh, we definitely, I mean, if we could get them, you know, it would be great. Get inside the Toyota plant. Toyota is looking for recreational things that are attracting people here. If you want them to come here, live here, work for them. They're very generous giving. They might very well donate us a fleet.
We gonna find out about their giving when I ask them to dredge that reservoir.
Well, don't miss them often, July.
I mean, they made the mess, they can fix it.
Well, that's true. And they got all the money in the world.
We gonna.
And that's not the only company. I mean, there was the, as far as that goes.
Yeah.
Of course, large bank can happen.
They say that.
Well, on the same note, Joy, you might get S Tower components because trails and, and
All that right there.
Activities at the lake, that helps insurance for corporations go down. If there's stuff in the area that employees can do for exercise and better health.
Well, later if you don't get me in the door, I'll just see you in the door to show up. Nice, Father? I'm not gonna try.
Oh, they do say that.
They've, they've always, every every time I've asked Tower Components, they've, they've gave. Every time I've asked them. MMA furniture, if I ask, they give. There's only one other one in town that don't. I don't, we're still plugging numbers for the admin too, ain't we?
Yeah, I haven't even had time to look at that. And JC, I believe you did help feel last year.
We got some quotes for paving, don't we?
Yeah, I got about uh seven thousand dollars for quotes in May, but not if it's not more. But it's a matter of what we wanna tackle.
We've been buried.
Eighty-nine thousand.
We've been lucky on storm cleanup for the last while. We haven't had no snow.
It actually might be more than I'm saying, but I know our Mission Heights was twenty thousand for half of the coast that. Salisbury, perhaps Salisbury, it turned most fifty-two thousand. Hatchwork was sixty-five hundred. I'll uh, I'll, I'll send them to Carol and tell them the next. Mission Heights is the one I wanna do, is there the one that, I know about that one.
I have, yeah.
She uh says that the way the pavement's messed up is running all the storm water right down our driveway to the front porch.
Do we have it to do this year? We hadn't used none of this year.
It was so much storm water because you repaired some.
Yeah, we found a storm drain that somebody.
The drains, storm drains.
Think we could go ahead and get Mission Heights done with this year's budget then? I mean, that'd just help for next year.
Mission Heights and maybe the Hatchwork.
Cause with the power bill, if you don't use it, they'll eventually take it back.
That's a fact.
They will in a heartbeat.
And we stay, that's one of the things that I watch. We stay under that limit. When I do a report every year.
Do you know how much we got, Carol? In power bill money? Do you remember?
I think the last time I called you Carol before I got these quotes, I think it was like twenty, I think it was about eighty-nine thousand is what we had left.
Um, okay. For this year's spending?
Well, I can, I can take as of December thirty first.
If we can get the bigger one done, which was what, Mission Heights?
Uh, the biggest one, Salisbury.
Oh, Salisbury, yeah.
Joey.
Yeah.
We gonna, we need to go back to the lake. We haven't even talked about that parking lot. If we do not spray that grass, pressure clean those cracks and get that minute and have that parking lot see ya.
Won't lose it.
And prime, we're gonna have to repave the parking lot. We looking like six or seven thousand dollars versus a hundred and fifty thousand dollars probably. Those parking lots have to be maintained or they, they gonna start bust breaking up.
I agree.
Same thing at Leonard Park, probably.
Oh, it's, yeah, Leonard Park, it is the same scenario. It's like the tennis court, bad news.
That's one of the parking lot over here.
Twenty-seven thousand dollars, it's great.
I mean, this is a parking lot too.
The tennis court, to be resurfaced, I had that.
It's crazy.
Yeah, like twenty-two thousand.
Why don't we just plow it and plant tarriffs?
It's not tarrif.
I don't like tarriffs.
It's not worth twenty-seven thousand dollars.
No.
The last time we looked at that, didn't we look at it?
We're trying to do something.
With the grant.
We've spent money on those tennis courts year after year after year after year. And I have never witnessed not a single soul playing tennis over there.
I, I, well, see, I, I, because at, at, at some point, they were not kept up to where they could play tennis. Because you had your high school team going way to Freedom Park and Liberty, playing their games because they couldn't come over here and play because the tennis courts were not in um, in order, so.
There's a way to make them both.
Something else there.
Yeah.
We're trying to give them more options of things to do here than to take away.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, and we talked about making that field at the lake a soccer field over there where all that grass is.
Yeah, I looked at that. That, that's, that, that would be, and, and I was thinking about parking, but there's some pretty good parking up there, Jason.
I'd like to see that lake you'd like.
It's like forty-eighths basis over there.
Yep.
Say what?
Forty-eight. Twenty-four on the side and then there's twenty-four up.
Yeah, we've got some emails to follow up on that grant. I'm sure you've seen them too. I just haven't had time to get out and.
And I've got Duke Energy's community relations person's name and email. And as far as I know, Duke has never helped our area out, far as Renssour. So I, I got a connection there. There's another lady I know and she gave me the information. So we can, there's grants through their community foundation for towns.
Okay, um, Jason, let me ask you a question on uh what we went over when we did our walkthroughs the other day over at Leonard Park. Um, I don't know if you've come up yet.
I got, I got some stuff.
Okay.
So the landscaping, what the members of MOP should talk about, I think we can get all that done, about two hundred and thirty dollars. Um, we're painting the paint, the possession stand, the, the top possession paint. We're considering the paint, the inside of the paint, not free fifty. The, the toilets and bathroom sinks, which you need five inches. Um, you're looking at about five hundred and fifty dollars for the toilets, about four hundred and fifty for the sinks. Um, I got a brandy on the side, I picked that out of Spencer. She said that the, the woman's supposed to get back to her on Monday. But the woman said that she don't think there's a cost for those, for us to get the.
They normally don't, they normally don't charge us.
So I think that'll be about free cost to get all those put in. And then the uh, the sink for the upper uh building possession, like in the kitchen area. Um, I think it's about two forty to get, to get it put in. I'll be a little, I, I kind of threw in some extra for, for plumbing supplies, so probably a little bit. And as soon as I get this whole fresh sheet filled out, I'll get any money.
Uh, question, the top, um, that backstop, the piece where you were talking about missing the roof.
Yeah.
Have you priced that as well?
Not yet. I already did get pricing on, on lumber. That's uh, so the steps, the, the roof of that. Um, I think that was almost two lumber things, all the, the lower field bleachers.
Yeah.
That's the, that's the lumber area pricing on.
Okay. Now, I guess my other question is manpower. Do you have manpower to be able to do these things? Get them done?
We'll do the best we can.
Okay.
I got uh, I got three guys at Public Works, four including the supervisor. Um, the rest of this week, starting tomorrow, the rest of this week will be tied up with a re-reading. We'll have regular reads tomorrow. We'll get the list. Last month, we had two hundred rereads. Um, and then Friday, I, I imagine Friday probably the cutoff day, um, or no, Monday will be the one to cut off on Friday.
Yeah.
So Monday will be the cutoff.
If you can, if you can get me the list of, of, cause I wanna be able to present it Tuesday night to see if we can't get some of this done so that I can go from there to figure out the budget for next year. Thank you.
Jason, do you know any companies that do parking lots, like repair, filling up those cracks and sealing?
Yeah, um, I don't know the law of that anymore. Um, that's who got us the quotes on all the paperwork here. Um, I own up in Climax, you do have Kibbutz Asphalt. Um, they, they probably interested in something like that. I know they done the uh, they done the parking lot at the post office. And then they done the parking lot at the mall, or they're done, that's who done all that work. So I can, I can reach out to them.
With Raleigh paper and carpet?
Yeah, so I've got, they've got a couple people we can reach out to in the city and then um, as far as getting the lines, we're painting, you know, we, we look at the guys on the Liberty Street, Main Street.
So, so you can get some prices on that?
Yeah.
What's next?
Trying to get more figures.
Well, we get that price, we'll know where we're going at the lake.
Yeah.
We, we need to end Leonard Park.
Are you wanting to burn the backside of the lake, quiet or just?
Yes. All, all, all of the parking lots on both sides. Yeah.
We probably need to look at the municipal. It does the same thing before we lose it. Jason, make, just get him to give us quote for the parking lot over here too, cause you know, grass is growing up. Y'all have to spray it.
Spray it about four or five times a year.
Just to see. And there's that, there's that sinkhole back there too. And there's that, there's that sinkhole back there too. I don't know. I don't know if they can fix, look at that. I'm sure it's not gonna be cheap.
What is that then?
In the back of this parking lot. It's been sinking a while, yeah. Don't hurt to get a quote.
Well, this Parks and Recreation. Carol, we need to get those audits done so we can apply for some grants.
We're closer than we were.
Yeah, and, and we're getting, we're pretty, pretty close to that one. Cause tomorrow, Carol and David's gonna lock theirselves up and get the rest of that stuff out.
Yeah.
So it won't take them sixty days.
It didn't take them long on this last one. It didn't take them, once he, that Haney came in twice. Three times and then.
It was done.
And he didn't have it. And it came back good. Yep. I'd like to see all three done by the end of June, but.
Well, we done a month and a half what the last mayor didn't do in four years. So we got three more to do, right? Actually, just two.
Just two.
And then the.
Gene will be another one.
Diane and I can get together on the admin. Uh, the, the main thing is the um. Contract services until I get started getting quotes in. I can't say much about that at all.
Do you want me to reach out to animal services since I know him?
They usually send it on him, but if you were to reach out.
See if they've got a.
Cause we are getting started earlier this year, which is a good thing.
Be nice to be done. Sent to L G C early.
I think one other issue we're gonna have to address is the uh, the meters again. I know we talked about those earlier last year. But we got a list of about a hundred and thirty meters right now that don't read or are not working. Um, we purchased thirty meters that came in last month, I think, the end of last month. Um, spent thirteen, or like ten to thirteen thousand dollars on those meters for thirty of them. Uh, we put one in at Brady lumber uh, two weeks ago. It read ten gallons and stopped reading the brand new meter.
And no warranty.
The meters we're currently using right now. Um, you know, the, the system I presented a couple of months ago, the A M I system. Those meters themselves are a hundred and forty dollars each. So if we were to buy a hundred of the meters we have in the ground now, it costs us about thirty thousand dollars to get a hundred of those. We can get a hundred of these new, these meters like I presented for a hundred and twenty dollars each. So for a hundred, we'd be looking at thirteen thousand for a hundred meters. Um, the thing with those, they're hard. Um, they're gonna have to be hand read until we get the whole system in place where they can't often read them from here.
Is there such thing as? This putting the system in?
Yeah, so if you build out the network first.
First.
Everything will communicate here. Building out the network, network is the biggest chump or a big chunk of the cost. We're looking at about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars to build up the network. The total, total project replacing every meter in town without a network and everything is uh, it was like one point six million.
One point six.
And we could, we could comment serve a ten year. I know that was a, the L G C had a problem.
Is that the same company that?
Yeah, a hundred percent.
Have presented.
We could go with USDA once our audits are up and get a little bit longer term and a cheaper payment.
I have a contact at USDA and he said that he can come and discuss options. Um, I don't know if they have a ten year. So the life of these meter are fifteen years. Um, so I don't think we need.
Go over fifteen years, yeah.
Right, you don't want to go over fifteen years, then we can start losing.
But they got grant money they give along with the loans sometimes. So it, it, it benefits us to check with them sometimes.
But we, we can't even get a loan till we do.
No, we had to get these two audits.
You know, it's kind of, kind of a point right now, we got a hundred meters, we're losing money. I think Diana and Carrie could correct me. I think a lot of those, she's having to build a flat rate to help her not profit. I, we can save money by getting these, but we're not going to get a new system. They don't do me any good to get these and that, can't hand read them.
So we have to vote if that is our goal, to go to that new system. And whenever we're able to get to that goal. And in the meantime, we can get the meters for the new system.
And be in play.
At a much cheaper price than what we can get the meters for the system we got now. They would have to be hand read, but they're hand reading, what'd you say, two hundred and some each month anyway?
Well, Matt, we already had, we, I mean, just in general, we have a hundred and, a hundred and thirty meters. All the meters that are one inch and bigger, when they installed the new meters, what we're going to have twelve, thirteen years ago now. They never replaced the one inch and bigger meters. So all those meters are older. They're probably going on about seventeen, eighteen years old. Um, so we're losing a lot of money on the big meters right now.
Um, does this system, these new meters that we're talking about, do they do the large meters also?
Yes, sir. They would, to do every meter, we have large meter and residential. Um, and the setup, the whole network would, I think, I think the price on it about one point six million. And then there's an option two, you can put a cutoff valve. And town hall, we do a cutoff from here that even if the homeowner turn, try to turn their meter on, they can do it. Um, but that is actually costly to add on to it.
And the current meters we've been buying, there's no warranty on them. When they go out, they're just out. So that and that Brady we're stuck with.
Uh, I'm gonna call the job back and I mean, that's, we got red ten gallons and fully stop reading, so. You know, we have to just put thirty of those in the ground. And who's to say that next month we go to read and they've only read fifty gallons? It's been a, I mean, I've, since I've been here in two thousand sixteen, they, the national meters have been the issue.
Well, I like that system because it also detected when people were using too much water. It sent an alert to town hall and.
There is, yeah, there is. Send alerts to the homeowner, um, and it will actually send to the town hall too.
Or if they're not using.
But, you know, they, they said since there is new board members, they, they'd be willing to come back and do another presentation if that's what's needed.
I think we need to do something because they're taking a lot of manpower and a lot of time. Doing that wants something else.
Between reading, direct re-reads, re-reads and everything else, we just spend about a week reading.
Well, tell you, um, this information will be accurate, so we make sure we're getting. Money that we should be getting.
When I looked at it the previous year, we had, we had produced at the water plant, we had produced a hundred and eighty-one million gallons of water per kilometer. And we'd only deal for a hundred and twenty-one million at that same time frame. So somewhere in there, and granted leaks, you know, you know, fire department flushes, us flushes, and getting lines, just, you know. Things that happen, you know, you can't calculate those things, but this is what happened. But somewhere in there, you, you have fifty-six million gallons of water that didn't get built for. That's, that's a lot of, lot of.
Cause of all the meters.
We have, we have about a thirty-two percent non-revenue water rate.
I think that's.
See you under thirteen.
I think that's what Surf City had and they got them down to.
Surf City in the first year, they, they saw a five hundred thousand dollar revenue increase in the first year.
That about pays for half of the system.
So going forward, you said, Carol, we need to have a, I guess, a plan? Okay, so um, putting this, I know we can't do anything until our business is taken care of. But um, how would that look if we wanted to move forward? I don't know, maybe we might need to have them to come in and have another conversation so that.
I, I think, I think going forward, I think we just need to figure out what meters we, if we want to go towards that system, I'm gonna start buying these meters when I have to replace them, cause they're cheaper. And we're having the hand read what we have anyway. Um, but, you know, then what that would do is we start buying them meters when the whole system gets put in, it will lower the overall cost. You don't have to purchase those meters that you already have in place. They're just tied to the system and communicates at home. So it would, if, you know, when you pull the trigger and do the whole, the whole thing at one time, it, it would lower that cost some, depending on how many get put in.
Can you get them to come back in? Cause you wasn't here and I think the mayor wasn't here. Get them back on the schedule?
Yeah, I'll, 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 I'll call it tomorrow and see when they have some availability.
Because I honestly think it's, the way the last audit ran, I think we'll be in good shape by July.
Yeah, I don't know what the finance, you know, the, the, the rents are right now, but, you know, before, I think the.
They had locked in.
Cost was like two hundred and fifty thousand a year. And if we were to get, you know, if we were to get what Surf City got, five hundred thousand dollar increase in revenues, we would still come out positive every year after paying.
We just need to say, you know, if, after the presentation, then if that's what we want to go to, then say we got a five-year plan or whatever. Five years, we're gonna go to this or whatever you want to say. Or as soon as we can, up to five years.
Since we're allowed to.
And then now we'll be buying the meters.
I think we.
Toward that goal.
I think we definitely need, need to start using those meters. There's no need to put these meters in the ground. It don't work.
I mean, they're that much cheaper.
To say that we're gonna go to that plan, not that we're getting it right then. There's no way we can get it right.
Our goal is.
That's our goal.
Cause one, the, the L G C just wouldn't let us finance because of the.
So they're, they're working with Yancey Bill and Yancey Bill's doing the same thing until they get their office caught up. They're, they're putting them in place as, as they need. Then when they're ready, we'll turn everything.
In place.
So what we got left?
Thinking, do we get numbers? Till we go to.
Till we get all these numbers and.
Got closed session.
Yep. Well, at this time, uh, we'll need to close this uh, budget workshop and go into. Executive, executive session.
I'd like to make a motion to invite our public utilities director in for the closed session.
I'll invite. Jason.
Get this handed.
It's a personnel problem.